I'd like to call the meeting of August 1st, 2017 County Commission to order. I thank you all for being with us this evening. We'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Saturday night, when my family was at home watching soccer game on television, we received a notice from the Asheville Police Department by phone and by text that there was a suspect in our immediate neighborhood who was believed to be armed and dangerous. All families were asked to stay in their homes until further notice. Like our neighbors, we locked our doors while the local police and other officials were out looking for this person. Over the past week, we have all been aware of the manhunt that took place in Buncombe, Henderson, McDowell County, and other parts of western North Carolina and eastern Tennessee, which finally resulted in the arrest of the suspect. Unfortunately, the life of a beloved member of the Mills River community was lost. Every day, we benefit from the commitment of the men and women who serve in public safety. They strive to keep us safe in our homes and our communities while placing themselves on the front lines. I'd like to open our commission meeting this evening with a word of thanks to them. And I'd like to invite all of us to take a moment of silence to give thanks for their efforts on behalf of our families and communities. Thank you. I'd like to read the ethics reminder for the board. Is there any item on the agenda this evening, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters that come before the board this evening. We're now at the public comment period of our board meeting. The time limit for individual comments to the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your chance to speak to us. The board reserves the right to deny public address on subject matters previously presented to the board at the same meeting. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak with us this evening? All right, we'll start with you, and then you can go next, and then you'll be third. And then we'll get to everybody else.
My name is Weston Hall. I live in Black Mountain. Nepotism breeds corruption and is linked to sexual harassment, discrimination, and loss of confidence in the government. It goes against everything Buncombe County stands for and their good practices and is a front to Buncombe County policy Article 1, Section 5, and 8. It does not promote a healthy, safe, well-educated community with thriving and sustainable quality of life. It does not lend to the effectiveness and efficient government citizens can trust. Ask yourself, how would you like to work under such a system? You state, well, there have been no complaints, but would you complain, and to whom? You were sexually harassed by the son of the chief of your department, so who do you go to to make your complaint? The chief? The board? Firefighters do not complain, not out of loyalty, but out of fear of their job. They are basically gagged by the system. I called a news organization, and they said there were numerous complaints, but no one wants to go on record. Friends run... Oh, sorry. Firefighters love their jobs, and it's hard to come by a position with large number of applicants. It is competitive, to say the least, with the nature of job. You stand to lose your friends, colleagues, way of life, and your identity. We have created an environment of fear. Does Buncombe County support such an environment? The answer is, not only do we support such, but we prop it up with tax dollars. And I do not speak of simply a captain with a son and firefighter on a different shift. I consider it to be a chief of the department employing a family in direct supervision as a paid fire department. Skyland Fire Department employs the chief's wife, daughter, son, and son-in-law. They state it's necessary for manpower, but we know that is not true with AB Tech cranking out 30 to 60 qualified firefighters a year. Nepotism is indeed breeds discrimination, which family members are hired and promoted on birth rights and not by qualifications. It has also lends to corruption, which firefighters say is prevalent. It has definitely created a hostile working environment where firefighters are silenced from speaking to leadership because of repercussions, losing a career that we all love. It hurts fellow firefighters, family members, and civilians. It's a direct attack on the ethos and legacy of all we work to preserve. Previously, you as a commission could not plead ignorance, but no longer. You have been notified, and you must act. Obviously, this is an NGO, but an NGO that receives tax dollars from Buncombe County and is perceived to be a government agency by the community. I am a citizen of Buncombe County, and I do not want my tax dollars going to promote such a hostile work environment. Also note, firefighters in Buncombe County rarely receive a living wage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. Brenda Smith, a resident of Arden. I apologize I wasn't able to be at the last meeting to say this, but this is concerning the budget. And I'm just gonna read the email I sent to Mr. Burgess for the Citizen Times. I did find the article in the library I mentioned that was on the budget meeting. On the budget, the comments... Oh, start here. "I disagree with the Citizen Times statement of Mike Fryer being a penny pincher. On the budget, it says, or it says there in the paper, robbing Peter to pay Paul. In my opinion, Mr. Fryer, he was the only one correct. That's what a budget is, penny pinching. Where can you save these dollars?" I didn't find any mention in Citizen Times article about the EMS not approved. EMS needed... Well, is needed for non-emergency use, too. EMS helped carry my mom to rehab and then the hospice, and helped a fellow employee at a work site. In just a few weeks, I was part of three EMS calls. One extreme emergency at work, two non-emergency. The employee was only saved because Skyland passed response time. I'm just one citizen of Buncombe County that needed three EMSs. The other, I understand, money transferred, paid to teachers, coming out of Proposition 13, I believe that's what was said, out of AB Tech dollars. And I agree with Mr. Fryer's disapproval of EMS and AB Tech dollars being taken. I felt correct, and thus the only correct vote was by him. I found no reference in the Citizen Times about the EMS or AB Tech. So in the future, I don't plan to vote on any propositions if the money can easily be taken for any use. And please support out of your surplus fund to give that money back to EMS. I don't want the call come in saying, I apologize, we don't have an ambulance for you right now. That's what saved that employee at work, was because Skyland was so fast." Thank you for listening, and thank you, Mr. Fryer.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Todd Stimson. We are presenting a resolution to Buncombe County Commissioners, which seeks to ensure that residents and citizens of Buncombe County have access to all viable medical options that could help alleviate symptoms associated with debilitating and chronic medical conditions. I will be passing this cover letter to you, and then another person will be presenting the resolution to you. The resolution to support North Carolina Medical Cannabis Act presents the possibility of significant changes not only to Buncombe County residents, but citizens and residents of North Carolina. Citizens have become more knowledgeable and informed of the benefits of medical cannabis and a wide spectrum of issues, which has changed the current legal status in 29 states and the District of Columbia, DC. We urge you to review the facts of the resolution and support it, to put it on the agenda for vote. To honor the faith placed in you as a representative of the people, we then urge you to vote to support the resolution and encourage the North Carolina state legislator to take immediate action to approve comprehensive medical cannabis legislation in order to ensure our county and state residents are receiving the most effective medical therapies possible, which includes the use of medical cannabis. Asheville, North Carolina, July 2nd, 2017, mission statement... Mission Health statement does not have a position on the legalization of medical cannabis. As such, Mission Health neither supports nor condemns any legislation that seeks to legalize medical cannabis use. With respect to Dr. Paulus, which is the CEO of Mission Health, personal views on cannabis, we provide a few in this letter from Mission Health's statement. Dr. Paulus states, "By way of background, many assume that cannabis first appeared on the scene in the 1960s. However, history tells us that the medical properties of cannabis have been recognized for centuries. The medical use of cannabis is documented in Egyptian papyri dating back to 1550 BCE. More recently, nearly two decades of research have shown that cannabis can be beneficial in alleviating pain and other symptoms associated with a ray of illnesses, including glaucoma, cancer, multiple sclerosis, anxiety, and pain control," to name a few. "In fact, quite possible broader legalization could help more people with unmanageable pain find relief. It could even have a positive mitigating effect against opioid epidemic. As many citizens and government officials know, there is a serious opioid epidemic in North Carolina with four towns in the top 20 nationally for the opioid abuse." Dr. Paulus states... I'll just hand you the cover letter. Can I pass it over to...
Yeah, you can share with the clerk. You're welcome, thank you.
And I have the resolution with me. My name is Taylan Breeden, and I'm a representative with Yes NC Cannabis. We're citizens fighting for safe access to safe medicine. And we do feel like currently with the opioid epidemic that we're fighting in not just Buncombe County but North Carolina, to have a safe alternative choice to pain pills and a natural one at that, we do feel like that could curb that. I suffer from Crohn's disease, so what happens is my intestine will become inflamed and close where I can't digest food. Cannabis has anti-inflammatory components in it that react with their CBD reactors. So I'm gonna go over the resolution with you guys. A resolution in support of House Bill 185, Senate Bill 648, and encouraging the North Carolina legislator to enact legislation that would legalize the use of cannabis for medical. Whereas medical cannabis is currently legal in 29 states and the District of Columbia, and eight of these states and DC have also legalized cannabis for non-medical use. And there is significant and growing amount of evidence that cannabis is beneficial to individuals suffering from many chronic debilitating conditions, including but not limited to cancer, HIV/AIDS, multiple sclerosis, glaucoma, chronic pain, Crohn's disease, intractable epilepsy, PTSD, and terminal illness. Whereas in January 2017, the National Academies of Science and Engineering in Medicine issued a report entitled "The Health Effects of Cannabis and Cannabinoids: The Current State of Evidence and Recommendations for Research," the committee arrived at nearly 100 different research conclusions related to cannabis and cannabinoid health. And whereas numerous healthcare organizations, including the American Nurses Association, American Academy of Family Physicians, Lymphona Foundation of America, American Preventive Medical Association, and more. Whereas the federal government continues to provide cannabis by prescription to four individuals for their use as medicine through the Food and Drug Administration Compassionate Investigational New Drug Program. Whereas the federal government, through the US Department of Health and Human Services, holds patent number 6630507, which describes the therapeutic potential for cannabinoid chemical science. Whereas the county commission seeks to ensure that the citizens of Buncombe County has access to all viable medical options that could help alleviate symptoms associated with debilitating medical conditions. And the county commission hereby supports changes in state and other laws to allow authorization, safe legal access to medical cannabis for qualified patients, grant local control to cities and counties to license and regulate medical cannabis businesses, and to stop the persecution, arrest, and investigation and imprisonment of qualified patients. If North Carolina law is amended to authorize and allow medical and federal law permits subject to local control, the county commission will develop a system. And I'll pass these guys on to you. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You'll go next.
Hi, my name's Amanda Kraus, and I'm a resident here in Buncombe County, live in West Asheville, and I'm really grateful for this opportunity to speak to you all about legalizing medical cannabis and supporting that in Buncombe County. Ironically, I care about everything. I'm quoting Afromant's remake of the "And Then I Got High" song. Our culture is shifting to health. For many of us, that means being present for our experiences, not numbing and suppressing them with side effects such as suicide. That's something that we're struggling today. Many citizens are afraid of taking opiates, and they want a safe alternative. Our society needs to know that our representatives support our best interests by being educated about the truth of the healing properties of medical cannabis. I spoke with a lifelong resident of western North Carolina today picking up water at the spring, and he has bone cancer in both of his knees. But not all of us can afford to move to Colorado like this guy has to do. Some of our citizens are suffering here, and we need to really step up and support them and step up for North Carolinians and say, here in Asheville, we really want our the best interest for people and the ability to reach safe access for cannabis and not get in on the illicit market. I spoke to a woman yesterday who says she can't sleep, and she's tried everything, and she's afraid she had to take a benzo from somebody because she's afraid to try it, but she had to... It was the first time in two months that she's gotten eight hours of sleep. And that's terrible. And she's a business owner here in Asheville. These are people who are our neighbors and our family members, and I want to be able to trust our doctors and our law officers to be my brothers and sisters and to have my back when it comes to real threats on my life. And that's like a side effect from many drugs that we see advertised on television to kids that see that. Suicide is okay, maybe, like if I take something and, oh, I might actually want to have suicide because I took something to numb something else. And when we have a real solution, so please, 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 put this on the agenda for your next meeting, because we want to know that you have our back, and we have tons of people to educate you on the endocannabinoid system and why every human needs to be able to have access to basic nutrition. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, yes, sir.
My name is Norman Ray. I live here in Asheville, and I'm speaking in favor of this resolution. This medical cannabis is not a fringe thing. It's something that can absolutely help folks. And I want to speak to about two people who work for me. One was named Robbie. He was a veteran who ran a minesweeper in Iraq. He has PTSD, and the VA has done everything they can do to help him. I've tried to teach him meditation techniques. People have worked with him with various things. He used to hear those explosions when the mines went off, and he still hears them every night, which causes him not to be able to sleep and not to be able to effectively hold down a job. So this medical use of cannabis is something that has been shown to prove to help people like that. I also had a guy working for me named Roy, who was about 30 years old. He'd been addicted to oxycodone since he was a teenager. And the medical science, which is in this resolution, has shown that this is somewhat effective against some of these opioid addictions. So I think this is something whose time has come that our citizens in North Carolina can greatly benefit from. And I appreciate your service here. I hope that you consider everything with the wisdom of your heart, and I ask you to favorably consider this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, County Commissioners. I am Timothy Sadler. I'm a resident of Asheville and Buncombe County. And I'm also here to speak in favor of the resolution for medical cannabis. And specifically for me, this is about efficiencies in government, spending our taxpayers' dollar wisely. We obviously do have a major problem with opioids. I went to a forum on Saturday and had great dialogue with many people there. And of course, brought to the attention of the folks, you know, these studies that exist that demonstrate, you know, other communities are seeing a lot of success in curbing opioid addiction, which of course leads to crime, and using our law enforcement in a way that is not efficient. Of course, we are limited in our resources in law enforcement, and we need those folks to be out there looking at the things that really cause problems in a community. Those things such as methamphetamine, those things as heroin and opioids, doctors that are giving out these pills that shouldn't be giving out these pills. I got my tooth pulled the other week, and the dentist asked me if I would like some opioids with that. I responded, no. How about some frankincense? Frankincense costs about 50 cents or a dollar, and it could have effectively treated my toothache. So, you know, these things are investigators need to be looking at, not Dr. Pyland and Todd Stimson and those types of folks. My father has PTSD from Vietnam, and the only thing that helps him is the medical cannabis. You know, the veterans are near and dear to my heart. My father... My grandfather was a sergeant major in World War II, and this is not what we fought for. We fought for liberty and freedom and the fact that we have to have a centralized source for medicine that really isn't even tested. These pharmaceutical companies test themselves. It's not fair. And efficiencies in government, respecting the veterans, and a decentralized local economic approach instead of a command and control, Big Pharma approach. If you're wise in District 3, please support this resolution. Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am, and then any others after this? Okay, you'll go after her.
Good evening. My name's Terry Boyd. I am a 35-year resident of western North Carolina. I have a background in medical sales in the medical field, but today I am a cannabinoid science educator. So I teach patients, and I teach the medical community, the science behind cannabis and hemp, and why it works. So I'm here today to speak up for the people who are too scared to speak up. For the patients and the medical community that supports this, we need to give doctors more tools. You can't expect them to fix the issue with the opioids if we don't give them anything but synthetic pills to treat pain. So I'm here, like I said, to speak for those individuals. I sent Jasmine and Al last week an email with some statistics of four different studies. I won't go into detail, but they basically have to do with how the opioid deaths have declined in the states that have medical cannabis. In the first year, 25%, and by year five, between 33% and 50% decrease. Deaths from car accidents decreased, crime rates went down, and there's a whole confusion out there with a lot of physicians that thinks that the use of cannabis will affect brain development. And that has been proven to not be, and there's still misconceptions based on what Blake Fagan said at the opioid talk the other night. So I'd like to leave you with this thought. I believe education is the key. And if everybody could take the time to just open their minds up, to understand just the basic science, the basic science behind why it works, it doesn't matter whether we're Republican or whether we're Democrat. It only matters now that you're informed and you know. The crime is not the patients using this medicine, which it has been longer than it has been illegal. The crime is knowing that it can help people and keeping it from them. I ask you to do the right thing and support the resolution. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tandra Bowers. I want to thank you so much for listening to us today. All I can do is share my story and my brother's story. I'm 62, he's 61. He lives in a state where he has access to medical cannabis. He's a cancer and stroke survivor. From his cancer, he had muscles taken from his neck, and he is in chronic pain. He went back to work. He had opioids in his system. He couldn't stay awake. He couldn't do his work. So his doctor suggested this. Now, my brother never touched marijuana. I was shocked when I heard he was gonna try it. He was shocked. He went to work. He wasn't sleepy. He could focus. He didn't have pain. And then he had a different strain, so he could go to sleep at night. Unfortunately, both of us are disabled, and unfortunately, I live in a state where I don't have access. My disabilities are invisible, is what we call them. I have PTSD. I have mood disorders. I have fibromyalgia. I have chronic depression. If I had access to this medicine, I wouldn't have to take all these pills that with really bad side effects. I've been losing hair like crazy. I finally just took myself off one of my medications. My hair stopped falling out. There are so many things that have happened to my body with all this medicine I have to take. If I could just have access to this... I tried it when I was home with my brother. It took care of my irritable bowel pain, 30 seconds, 30 seconds. And we don't have access to this. When I have panic attacks, I can't get a medicine that's gonna fast, act fast. I had a panic attack when I was visiting my brother. He gave me some. In two minutes, it was gone. I didn't have to go to the hospital. I've had to be hospitalized for these things. Because of my disability, I can't afford that. So please, please, please support this. Thank you.
All right, can I ask how many more folks are planning to comment during public comment? All right, all right, you'll be our last person, thank you. Come on up. Yes.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I will take advantage of your time. My name is Cindell Williams, and I haven't been a resident here long, but from the time that we got here, my partner and I, we've been working very hard to become contributing members of your community. we've been working very hard to become contributing members of your community. My partner's a painter and he has degenerative disc disease. He is in constant pain every day. And we used our personal money to take him to a pain management specialist here in Buncombe County. And for whatever reason, they denied him the pain management he needed. And because of the opioid epidemic here, they didn't give him anything. They're too afraid to treat people who are in constant pain because of this epidemic. So what are we supposed to do as residents of Buncombe County? To help him continue to work and provide for his three children? Because at any moment, he could be in so much pain that he would not be able to work for a week, two weeks. And every dollar counts when you have children. I'm sure all of you know that. So I stand before you hoping that you will put this on the agenda to be a consideration here. Because we don't have anything else. Nobody wants to help us. Help, please help us. That's all I can say. Thank you. It was short and sweet.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Alright, thank you all for, thank you to everyone who came this evening to participate in public comment. Alright, so I asked who else was going to comment and people, I think that was the last person raised her hand. Don, you've got a comment. And Jer, you, or do you have a comment too? Alright, go ahead, Don. These will be the last two during public comment tonight.
Well, I have a couple of questions, but before I get into my questions, I have a personal friend that's smoking a little pot right now for cancer. And I've got a brother that's an alcoholic. And alcohol used to be used to mix medicine. So, you know, I don't think any one thing is the solution to everybody's problem. Be it marijuana, or alcohol, or beer. We always create problems with what we've got. So anyway, that's just my comment on that because I have a question. And I'm going to be looking at all the commissioners. This is not for the staff. I want to see which commissioner up there has enough concern to ask some simple questions. I see that our governor has now increased the tax credit for solar energy. I see that we have a member of our board promoting solar energy. And I see that a member of our board stated that he named everyone that is a particular party. If you notice, I'm being very proper. And they said that they were going to make Buncombe County 100% renewable energy. Well, folks, there's something called REC's, Renewable Energy Credits. And if you'll look at the legislation the governor's trying to pass, let's do power, purchase more, and get more renewable energy credits. That's a way to sell and make money off of solar power that's not known through tax deduction and tax rate reduction for the people that's got the money to invest in solar energy. So before we look at making Buncombe County 100% solar, I have some questions. You wouldn't invest money in a project to the bank without you know what the return is. I want to know how much energy Buncombe County consumes on an annual basis. I also want to know how much energy the city of Asheville consumes on an annual basis. And how much energy each of the schools consume on an energy basis. And then I need to know the square footage of land area that it will take in solar panels to provide that much energy. That question is essential before you say you're going to make Buncombe County 100% dependent on renewable energy. And Al, you know I'm dead on. You don't invest in something that you know the cost. You don't invest in something unless you know what it's going to require. And then you need to address what you're going to do with those energy panels in 30 years from now. Because I remind this board, there's not a member up there that was present when I stood before the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners and said, "You're going to have problems at CTS." Some of the staff probably remembers that. I was right then and I'm right now with my questions. And I'm going to look and see who will step forward and have the forethought to answer the question. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you again. I want to thank you for the workshops that you've been doing. I think it's great. It's transparency and it's much more than we ever had. And I wish you well in the future for doing that. Transparency is good, what you're doing. But I'd like to see this put on television for everyone. I know I do it. I got 450 hits on both meetings on two weeks apart. Already got that many on six days. So it's not about what I do. It's about what you do. You just need to figure out a way to transfer this to a video in the workshop so everyone can see it and publicize it better. Make it more transparent. Alright, that's your kudo for the day. You just get one once in a while. Okay? The other thing, I know that I'm an older person here, but as a teenager, I walked from Canler to Asheville. And they might be a car or truck pass every once in a while. And that's how bad it was for traffic congestion back then. We could, we'd walk to church and there'd be 10 or 12 of us, 15 of us. And we didn't have to worry about traffic. We was the traffic. Well, it's a good thing about that. We was community involved, community church, community about everything. You know what? We didn't have to worry about liquor and beer and all the other things, the bad things. We didn't have to worry about that. Because on Sunday, there wasn't nothing open for you to get, not even groceries. So I'm just bringing you a point here that as a child, that meant something to me. And that's the reason I do the things I do today to help people. Is my life was good and I'd like to see everybody's life improve. On this resolution today on the beer sale before 12, I think it would be great to show the public here, even though it might sound small, it's big. It's not only just showing a principle here of what should be, but it's a safety issue as well, a safety issue. How many people have you heard about on the news that went and within a two-hour period of time, they committed crimes that they wouldn't probably have committed if they hadn't went where they shouldn't have been? This is just pointing out a little example. We need to go back to our roots here in Buncombe County. I'm not ashamed of mine. I'm proud of it. I think we need to do something for the good of the people. Voting this resolution down on this would be the right thing. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Rice. I would like to ask the commission's approval to move up the good news item. I've got a lot of folks from Harmony Valley who are here with us. If it's okay with everyone, I'd like to do that and then we'll go to the consent agenda item right after that. So I'm going to ask Commissioners Presley and Belcher to come forward. And I'd like to invite all of the athletes and coaches who are with Harmony Valley Six to come forward and we want to acknowledge your great accomplishments in this season just completed. Thank you for being with us.
Okay, so we got a couple of different, we got all the coaches and assistant coaches, all of them up here? Hmm? I'm sorry? Okay, but everybody that's here. We got them all. Okay, cool. Alright, so we got two different awards. So what we're going to do, I'm going to just, I'm going to read, I'm going to read one fully. And then I'm going to, then I'll read the name and I'll hand them to Commissioner Presley and he can give them to the ones that are here. And then the ones that are not here, we will just stack them up and give them to y'all at the end. And then at the end, we'll come up with you guys and y'all can get a picture of where you're at. And you'll have all the commissioners behind you also. Alright? So this is, this is a repeat from last year, right? This is back-to-back? Am I right? Okay, so this is six and under. And this is a difficult time to recognize them, but we didn't want to wait until they got back to school. We wanted to go ahead and do it. So Buncombe County Commissioners recognize and honor, I'm going to read the first name, Addison Ball, Harmony Valley Six and Under, 2017 State Babe Ruth Softball Champion. All these read the same. On behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, this board does hereby express its sincere appreciation, honor, and pride in your accomplishments. As a member of the Harmony Valley Six and Under softball team on the occasion of your state championship, we commend your dedication of time and hard work. Did you see that grin right there? That's why, that's why we do this right there. Dedication of time and hard work that resulted in victory. You have brought honor to your county. This is the first day of August 2017, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. And I'm going to read every name, so you'll know who they are. Brandy Newman, Chairman. Ellen Frost, Vice Chair. Joe Belcher, Commissioner. Robert Presley, Commissioner. Jasmine Beach, Ferrari, Commissioner. Mike Frye, Commissioner. Al Whitesides, Commissioner. All these read the same. Is Addison Ball here?
No.
That's my girl. Tell them. Paisley Clemmons. I figure y'all are going to move. Rena Connor. Did I say it right? There you go. Awesome. Congratulations. Hannah Fish. Emma Fisher. Tenley Franklin. Olivia Reese. Braylon Smith. Not here. You keep us, you keep us honest. You tell us. Emilio Wardlaw. Did I say that right? Probably toward, probably did. McKenna Widdit. Riley Wise. Not here. Thank you. Kenzie Hamlin. Alright, now we got, now I'm going to read for the coaches. This one is for Alex Franklin, Harmony Valley Six and Under Coach, 2017. Kane and Robertson. Coach, not here? Give Kane a hand anyhow? Alright, Levi Smith. We got one more. Adam Hamlin. There he is. Alright, give them all a hand again.
Adam, this is two years in a row, right? And you've got two girls that are back-to-back that have done this twice?
Yeah, last year's team did the same thing. Totally different thing to do, all different girls.
And my granddaughter plays for him and she didn't make the All-Star because this man right here is one of the most unique coaches they are. He drives to make them better. And he's took these kids two years in a row, so.
I just want these girls to know how proud I am and how proud their community is of them. I want y'all to know what y'all did. And y'all come together as a team, just like we talked about at every practice. You did what we asked and that's one of the reasons y'all are up here today. Good job.
Alright, come on up here, one of the other coaches on this end with me. Come around here. There we go. Alright, and if any of your parents are here and you want to take a picture, you can come get it now.
Alright, great job, ladies. Alright, we'll get back to the consent agenda item. We're going to add the reappointment of Mike Frye to the AB Tech Board. And what is the duration of that term? All the AB Tech appointments are for four years. Okay. Alright, that's for a four-year term. And Mr. Frue, if you could also share a couple of words with us about the, we're going to add the resolution authorizing acquisition improvement and lease of school property. Could you just share a couple of, it's a very short resolution, but could you just share a couple of?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, at least a year ago, this board approved projects for city school system at Asheville High, IRB Jones, and Randolph. And they approved the budgets and the project. In April of this year, this board approved to proceed with those projects. And I lost my spot. But what this does is, is I simply wanted to tie the loop that the board specifically authorized the receipt of the properties at IRB Jones and Randolph and the leaseback of those properties to the schools during the period of construction and equipping the properties. We don't believe that we need these, either of these schools, elementary schools, as financing security. So this is a regulatory conveyance to make it easier for the process for permitting and construction and to wrap up the project. So it's just a pro forma matter. And I have the deeds and I have the leases and they all check out. And they will be released once the projects are complete.
Terrific. So since we're financing some major improvements to the schools, we need title to the school's property while that's happening?
In particular for Asheville High, because that's going to be some period of time for the financing to wrap up on that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from any commissioners about that? Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Frue. Are there any questions about any other items on the consent agenda this evening? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of the resolution authorizing acquisition improvement and lease of school property and the appointment of Commissioner Mike Frye to the AB Tech Board for a four-year term. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the county manager's report. And we're going to get an update from Jim Holland and Lisa Eby on the opioid response efforts in the community. Thank you for being with us.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the work that we've been doing in Buncombe County across Health and Human Services and Buncombe County Government. We're working, using the existing resources we have and the existing talent within our community to address this public health crisis. Some of the partners that we've been working with are Stacy Wood, who's led with the communication team, and Ben Atkins, county PR team as well. You'll see a video of theirs just shortly. Dr. Blake Fagan with May Heck has been spearheading talks within the community to get the word out. Alice Elio with the school system, Sunrise Recovery, Ken Raza, our community engagement team, and Child Welfare and Health and Human Services staff, as well as the leadership of Jim Holland. So I wanted to tell you that there's a lot of work being done and it's being done within the resources that we have within the county. Can you cue up the PowerPoint, please? This is a picture of a girl that was in the front line. It's, you see these children right up here today who were the athletes? This was a student athlete who was injured, suffered pain, had painkillers, and then went on to become addicted and unfortunately died. So this epidemic touches everybody in this community. Richard Harward speaks about how do you create a movement? And that's really what we're trying to do here, is we're trying to create a movement across our county where we can understand the implications of this public health crisis. And one way you can do that is you can create one big splash and have a big campaign and it sends out a big ripple into the community. But that's not really been shown to be effective. What really is effective is if you throw out a thousand pebbles into the community, and each one of those pebbles becomes a ripple that overlaps and galvanizes the community. And so we're trying to create a thousand conversations, a thousand pebbles tossed in this community, where we're helping the community to understand what every person can do to attack and address this epidemic. So it starts with education, and I'm going to go through just some of the relevant slides that we have in a speakers bureau that we've developed. The speakers bureau is an easy presentation that anyone can give. You all could give it, any member in this community could give it. And it's just getting the information out to the public so that we can each connect the dots and understand how we can make a difference. So the first thing we want to do is to encourage the public is to talk to your children. We know that parents who talk to their children about the risk of opioid addiction are 50% less likely to use opioids and to become addicted. So we want parents to have these conversations. We want to arm parents with the ability to have these conversations as well. We want people, when they go to their physician, to be informed consumers, to be able to ask their physicians the kind of questions, do I have to take painkillers? Is there another way that I might alleviate this pain? Do I need to take the full regimen? When can I taper off and start taking things like Tylenol or Advil? So we, we're going out in the community and trying to educate the community. We need the community to understand, if they don't hear anything else, is never, ever share your medication. 50% of those that become addicted to opioids get that medication initially from family or friends. So just making sure that people know not to share medication is really important. I've done it in my family, when a sister comes to visit and she's not feeling well with the toothache, I've, I've done it, and none of us should be doing it. We're all at risk. We can take simple steps. Everybody in this room can go home tonight, count the painkillers that you have in your medicine cabinet, be aware of them, secure your pills, take them out of the medicine cabinet, put them somewhere where other people can't find them. Or drop off your unused pills at the prescription drop-off locations located there. And then ask your family and friends to do the same. Get the word out. We need to be having these conversations in our community. The other thing that we need to do is really change the dynamics of this conversation. The disease of addiction thrives in darkness, and it must be defeated in light. And we do this by really understanding that this is a disease. It's not a character flaw, it's a public health crisis. And just like the conversations that we had around AIDS, took it out of darkness and moved it into the light and saved lives, we can do the same thing in our community if we're all talking about this epidemic, and again, connecting dots to how everyday people can make a difference. And then we also need to know where to refer people for help. I just had a neighbor recently who lost a son to addiction, and it's happening in our community, and we need to know how to get people connected to help. Only one in 10 people who are addicted or suffering from substance abuse disorder actually get help. And so there's a lot of work to be done in this. And then we're also working with the medical community to get the word out. We developed labels. These labels actually are put on prescription painkillers, so that when you pick up your prescription now, it'll have this black label on it that warns people that they're highly addictive. We created a number of these that will be kind of rotated, kind of like the tobacco warnings. And so we're using that. We also worked with Mayhec to get blister packs so that physicians could actually hand people who'd come in with pain blister packs with a dosage of Advil and Aleve, no, am I saying that wrong? Advil and Tylenol, acetaminophen and ibuprofen in combinations that have been shown to actually be more effective in treating acute pain. So we're doing things to also work with medical providers in our community. This information that I gave you is just a very quick snapshot about the kind of community conversations that we want to have. We have scheduled speakers bureaus where we're training, training, train the trainer, where we're training people to actually go into their churches, to go in their communities, to have these conversations. I have handouts over there with the dates and times. If people want to come to these meetings and get trained, we'll hand you the PowerPoint and send you on your way. We're also willing to have Dr. Fagan come and do these talks with you, or have other members of our staff come out in the community and do these talks. Dr. Fagan is single-handedly championing this. He, I, he's already been, before school let out this year, he had two trainings that he did with teachers, and he is more than willing to come out and speak to any community organization. There are some additional steps we're taking to address this epidemic. We're working on an opioid summit, and we're really focusing on the schools. And we're creating kind of a long runway of planning for the summit. And we're doing that purposefully so that we make sure that the kids are involved in the process. We're using existing school groups to help them get involved and plan the conference, so the kids will learn about planning a very large project, and then also learn about the opioid epidemic in the process, and hopefully that will help within the school system. This summit will be involving parents with their kids, as well as other community members, again, to foster those kind of conversations that we know make a difference. We have settled on the Faith Base Summit for September 14th at 6:30 at the AME Church. We have, right now, almost 60 churches, black, white, brown churches in our community that are willing to come together to address this epidemic. We're hoping to pick a day, one day in our, one Sunday in our community that we can have sermons across the community on this topic. We're creating community listens, listening sessions. We'd like to work with Kathy Hughes and the Board of Commissioners to, again, help you go out in the community and hear from community members and do education as well. Continuing the physician education, working with Mayhec and Mission. We're developing a web-based toolkit, and again, we're doing the school health training. So that's what we're up to right now. And then Jim Holland is going to talk about some of the work specific to Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Just to update you on a couple of things that we're doing within Health and Human Services. You tasked us with going back and looking across the nation, and looking at best practices and what was happening, and looking how we could do that within the resources that we have, and we've done that. And just to update you on a couple of things that we're doing. Abba House, which is through Western Carolina Rescue Ministries, they have built a 14-bed, 14 bedrooms for pregnant women who have either had their babies or are working towards getting their babies back and facing addiction. That is still on track to open September 1st. Tammy Shook and her staff are working with the community partners to work out the methods by which it's determined who goes into those facilities and, and the actual protocol that will be there. We're very excited that that process is moving forward, and that it will be ready to go September 1. Also, within child welfare, we looked at a model in Kentucky, and they began a model called the Sobriety Treatment and Recovery Teams. And what that really does is it provides a peer support specialist that has been through the child welfare system, that had faced addiction, and has come out on the other side, and to be partnered alongside a family that we're working with that is struggling with addiction, and that either has or has the potential to lose custody of their children, and working with them to help them understand the, the ups and downs of recovery so that they can get back together with their family and with their children and to be reunified. That's just now up and running. It's a great, promising practice. It also provides some clinical therapy as well that we're providing to help people get through some of those hardest times from a behavioral health perspective as well. One thing that happened in the legislature this year was the Strengthen Opioid Prevention, Strengthen Opioid Misuse Prevention Act, or the STOP Act, and that was passed. One of the key components of that was harm reduction. And it allows now governments, with the exception of the state, to use resources to help in harm reduction strategies. And mainly that rests with syringe exchange programs. From a public health perspective, that has great application in terms of reducing the, the incidence of particularly hepatitis C, which is epidemic levels right now in our community. There are ups and, there are positives about harm reduction strategies, but there are also challenges related to that. And so Dr. Jennifer Mullen Dor is working with a group in the community, both law enforcement as well as harm reduction partners, to try to come up with some strategies to make a harm reduction strategy work, both for the people that are suffering addiction, and also the communities that can be impacted through that. One of the other things that has happened in the, at the federal level is that North Carolina received a $31 million grant to specifically help treat addiction, as well as some prevention strategies. That money, $15 million a year, has been, will be distributed through the local management entity via Health, and be used mostly, 80% of those dollars will be used for treatment and getting treatment on the ground right away. Wanted to just show you a couple data points that we have. This is EMS overdose incidents. And while you see the different colors related to overdose, it's, it's, can represent suicides, it can represent overdoses, and it represents chemical dependency overdoses that are, that are called. It's been hard to tease those out. And when you look at those, do we see a pattern? We don't really see a pattern in terms of a trend going up and down. I think anecdotally, what first responders tell us, that it's more of an indication of the type of illegal substances that are in the community. And based on the strength, or based on the type that is in the community at a particular time, it can be reflective of the numbers of overdoses that are there. For example, fentanyl, or the derivatives of fentanyl, carfentanil, which is the elephant tranquilizer, that has an impact on potential overdoses. In June, we thought we were seeing a decline, but we just got the data for July, and it's, it's gone back up again. When we look at the Narcan administration, again, not any type of trend that we can see, except again, that anecdotal based on what types of drugs are out there and their potency. One interesting fact is that we had wanted to know, are the people that we're administering Narcan to, are we administering it to the same people over and over again? When we look through June of that, that's about 159 administrations. 146 of those were unique individuals. So for the most part, we're not seeing the same people back over and over again. That's, that's a mixed message in terms of what the impact is. It is saying that it's, it's across our community. One of the things that Kathy's team has tried to do is to try to promote what happens in an EMS situation, and has done two PSAs that we'll show you now of what may be able to be helpful for the community to be able to see.
911, where's the emergency?
I need an, I need an ambulance right away. My son just overdosed on heroin. He's unconscious. Please hurry!
Is he breathing?
I don't know. I can't wake him up. I can't wake him up. Please hurry!
Have a phone with me, have a phone with me, okay? He's overdosed on heroin, right?
Yes.
Okay, how old is he?
He's 21. Oh my God.
Yeah, we're calling somewhere, and I don't know where. I don't think he's up.
It's okay, I'm going to give you some help.
They're both breathing, breathing.
Okay, okay. But you're unable to wake him up?
No, I tried, and they won't wake up.
Just don't hang up. They're coming very soon.
So there are a lot of things that we're moving forward on. We look forward to continuing to bring you updates that hopefully show that these efforts, along with others, are making a difference and making a significant impact on the community. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there going to be any PSA about education similar to what Lisa was talking about? So we get to before that point?
I, I think that that is a great idea. I think it would be nice to be able to coordinate the work that Lisa's doing and her team around prevention to do that as well.
Because I mean, by the time, I'd like to, I mean, I, you know, just to focus on how not to get in that situation.
There's a lot we can do.
Yep.
So just a couple of comments. I want to, I want to thank both of you for, and the team for the follow-up and the information. And in the slide presentation, the, the Highly Addictive Banner struck me. I think it's excellent. I'd love to hear future reports on that, on, you know, how people are participating in that. Also, I don't think there was, there was, pretty close to almost not a, a dry eye in the room with the videos. I'd, I'd say if, if you would have showed one more, then there probably would not have been, because it struck at the heart of, I, I believe every commissioner up here, and I know probably all, all of the people in the audience. So I'll give you an excellent on both of those. It's a, it's a tough message, but it was delivered very well, very heartfelt and compassionate. And I just, it was very moving, and I appreciate that. Also, as part of the Safety Net meeting today, and, you know, y'all continue to follow up on alternative ways and of, of just research and, and trying to find out why citizens in Buncombe County are affected by this addiction and finding ways to prevent it. I learned some amazing things today, how Tylenol can convert into morphine for some people with, I think opioid, different opioid receptors they have. And it was very eye-opening, even for, you know, for little children, and how medicine doesn't affect everybody the same way. It was, it was very good. So hats off, difficult subject, but work, work well done, and, and work that I believe will save lives in Buncombe County, I appreciate it.
I sent an email, but a very dear friend of mine was recently at Mission for a leg injury. And he was in the ED, and he had a very perfunctory exam, and then was prescribed 18 days' worth of heroin derivative drugs. And I emailed everybody about it, but I wanted to say it in public again, because how, how can we combat this when the, the performance of the ED seems to be so irregular? On one hand, we hear one thing, and then, you know, when you have these conversations with people, it's so disheartening. And he refused, and didn't, he took, he took the prescription but didn't fulfill it. But what can we do other than education to control this? Because clearly, Mission is very, it's not consistent what they do.
I, I did raise that issue with a representative from Mission today, as a matter of fact. And I do think that one of the things that we will have to continue to do is to continue to, to educate, educate, educate about that message. Because it's, it's, as Dr. Fagan has said here before, that is ingrained in physicians. And to change that behavior, and to especially in an emergency setting where you're not in a relationship with the patient, that's even more critical to be able to do that. And so I think bringing the things up, when you hear those as bad as they are, is critical to make sure that we continue to make sure that people understand it, that we get that message out to physicians wherever it rests.
And I think it's unfortunate, quite a few people keep doctors on a pedestal, and so you can hear on one thing, this is a bad thing, but when a doctor prescribes something, you're torn. And it takes, I think, an extraordinarily strong person to say, no, I don't want that, I want something else.
Can I, can I have a follow-up on that? The legislation that was passed through the legislature this year, doesn't it regulate the number of opioid or highly, otherwise highly addictive pills that can be prescribed? Could you just talk a little bit more about what's in that legislation? And how it, to what degree it will address, I think, this critical concern about over-prescription of these addictive drugs?
There are, there are. Some of the things that it does is it's, it puts teeth behind the Controlled Substances Reporting System that all providers are to use when they prescribe an opioid, to be able to look in that system, and also to be able to register the opiates that they give to that. It also does limit the amount of prescriptions, the number of days that can be prescribed. To 10 is supposed to be the, the limit that that has, and this takes effect September 1. It does also require, will require electronic prescribing, so that you can't get, you can't potentially fraudulently use a prescription pad and take a prescription to a pharmacist. Again, that will begin, that does not begin until January of 2020. It does require for mid-level providers to have a personal consultation with the physician before they prescribe an opioid, so that they do make sure that they're consulting, and that the physician has an agreement that that must be, can be given. It does, again, provide for pharmacies must report if they suspect that someone is abusing, either shopping around for different medications with different prescriptions, or if they suspect someone is using inappropriately. They are required to report, and pharmacies are required, or have. have financial penalties if they fail to report. It does also provide some additional supports for the distribution and the prescription for naloxone, which is the opiate reversing drug, and does allow for standing orders by a physician to be able to be given so that members of the community or members of another government entity, for example, we could under the Health Department do that. We already do that under EMS for that process. And so, the one thing that didn't get in there is dollars for treatment that was planned, but the $15 million that came through from the federal government will supplant that and be used to help support that.
Do you think that, you know, when we first had, I think, one of our earlier presentations about this problem, you know, there were some numbers shown about how many opioids are prescribed in Buncombe County each year and it was just a mind-boggling number, I think it was over 10 million, it was maybe 18 million or something like that. Do you think that, is it possible to know at this point with this new legislation that will limit the number of pills that can be prescribed, if that's gonna be really effective in driving those numbers down? Because just, you know, this is a really complicated problem, but just when you see that many of these really addictive pills being prescribed, it's a really simple understanding is that there's gonna be hundreds of people who are gonna get hurt and addicted and die when there's that many of these really addictive pills just out there. So, I know this is new legislation, but just based on what we've seen in other places, is there reason to be optimistic that that's gonna really drive these numbers down substantially? Or what's your, what's the outlook on that?
I think that's an open question as to how that happens. You know, if I think back to Dr. Fagan coming here and saying, and Dr. Hardy saying, it takes five minutes to say yes and 25 minutes to say no. And so, the reality is that prescribers must be at the point where they understand the consequences and be able to help people. The other side of that is already the people that are receiving those medications, if they are addicted, which a lot of those folks are, is how do you enroll them or engage them in treatment? And how do you provide the facilities and the outpatient or necessarily the inpatient to be able to do that? And I think that continues to be a dilemma and continues to be a struggle with the medication-assisted therapy. I do think there's, the fact that you're asking about it, that it's more visible than it's ever been, I think, does put pressure on both providers and the community to be more aware. But the reality is, I think we won't know until we see the full impact of the STOP Act and some other treatment and prevention efforts that come forward to see if we're gonna make a dent in that.
So, one last question on this. You know, there were numbers shown about the number of opioids that were prescribed in Buncombe County, and I can't recall what all the different sources for that information were. Do we have a good system for tracking, you know, quantitatively, those numbers over time? I mean, will we be able to see, you know, this year, next year? Will we be able to see how those trends change? And hopefully, obviously, in a really strongly downward direction. Is that information available to us or is it more of an estimating process? Or how does, how accurate can we, do we have that dialed in?
I think one example of how accurate we have it is the state website that had that information and got so much attention is now down for maintenance. Because I think that they were very concerned about the validity of what they were showing and making sure that that information was actually correct. So, that system of reporting, both in the CSRS as well as looking at claims data, will, is designed to help do that, but there are a lot of things that go into that that make that problematic in terms of getting the full picture. You know, when we looked at it from 15 to 16, it had gone up, but some counties had gone down. It's very much, I think that's, again, an open question. I wish I had a better answer for you.
I appreciate that. And I guess I would just say, I hope that we can do whatever we can at this level, you know, here in Buncombe County to advocate for really getting the best information that's possible on that. Because if we don't have that information and if we can't see those trends of prescriptions going down, we're losing. I mean, everything else we do, all the best education, all of the best, if there's that many of these highly addictive pills being prescribed, the reality is, a lot of them are just gonna get in the wrong hands, they're gonna be misused. So, we've gotta see those numbers going down. Otherwise, we know we're just staying in the same place and the problem will just get worse.
Is it possible to see where the prescriptions come from, whether it's the ED, whether five private physicians, is it?
I have asked that question and it is extremely difficult to know because it's not always based on the ED. It's based on the prescriber.
Right, right.
So, the prescriber could be anywhere.
Right, yeah, that, right, right, right. I see, yep.
So, just to piggyback on what you said, because I was really gonna ask the same question, and so, I guess I'll put it as a challenge to, it's important for us to find an accurate source that we can measure this so that, I mean, I like what, I like the, you know, opioid response plan, you know, on the agenda. It'd be nice to see it coming back, you know, quarterly, in my opinion. You know, it's up to the board, but to see it quarterly, not waiting a year, but to see where are we with as much information as you can to show the, you know, the good and the bad. That way, we can respond in a proper way. But I think measuring this is key and having a good baseline to start with and just, you know, I don't begin to tell you where to look, but just to find a good source so that you are comfortable with and let's start reporting and measuring this in light of, in light of some legislation and in light of the efforts that we're trying to do here as a commission, as a county and Health and Human Services. We will do that.
Great. Thank you all for the report and for your work and it's a really important issue. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Community Child Protection Team and Child Family Prevention Team Report, and Jennifer Nelson will update us on this item. Thank you for being here.
Hello, thank you for having me this evening. So, I am Jennifer Nielsen and I've had the honor of serving as the Chair of the Community Child Protection Team slash Child Fatality Prevention Team here in Buncombe County for the last two and a half years. I've also been, some of you may know me, I've been with Guardian Ed Lightum Program here in Buncombe County for 13 years. And that work that I've done at Guardian Ed Lightum definitely informs the work that I do for a child protection team. And additionally, I bring the experience of both of those organizations to my work on the Buncombe County Women's Commission, which I've been proud to be a member of for the past year. So, thank you. I would like to take just a moment to thank Commissioner Beech Ferraro for joining the Community Child Protection Team last year. It's really, it's really critical to have a cross-section of the community represented on our teams to make sure that the work we do is transparent, informed, and comprehensive. So, I'd like to thank her for joining our group. Our 2016 annual report was distributed to everybody and it outlines the work that our team undertook. Our focus last year was on educating the community about safe sleep conditions for infants and the impact of opioid replacement therapy on mothers and newborns after their discharge from the hospital. So, you can see a lot of the work across our county is interconnected. We're pleased to be able to report that we used our child protection teams in conjunction with an infant mortality grant the county received to purchase a total of 74 Safe Sleep Boxes. For those of you who might not know what those are, you can go online and look them up. The country of Finland has used them for a very long time to have one of the best, or I'm sorry, the least, the lowest infant mortality rates in the world. But we also, we bought 74 of those, 74 sleep sacks and 300 onesies with the ABCs of Safe Sleep printed on them, alone, on your back and in a crib, A, B, C, as a reminder for new parents. Priority distribution for all of those items was designated for new parents that did not have a safe sleep option upon discharge from the hospital and situations where mothers and/or babies were on opioid replacement therapy and there was a concern upon discharge. You can also see that we performed 24 child fatality reviews last year. This is emotionally taxing but critically important work that our team undertakes. Our team works diligently to identify and address gaps and barriers and deficiencies in community services or resources in order that future child fatalities can hopefully be prevented. And finally, we did perform two additional case reviews of Health and Human Services active cases. Social workers are able to bring cases to our team for discussion and review. They tend to bring cases where their efforts have been unable to bring, unable to bring about change in the family due to barriers in accessing resources or lack of resources in our community, or abuse, neglect, or dependency has been substantiated and the family has not been able to undertake the efforts to correct those situations. Because our team, like I said, is a cross-section of the community, we're able to bring new insights or suggestions that the DHHS staff may not have been aware of or overlooked. So, our team continues our important work in 2017. We look forward to reporting to you next year about our efforts that are currently underway. Please know that our team is very appreciative of the resources you, the commission members, allocate to keeping children safe in our community. I also have DHHS staff here that sit on the team with me if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from any of the commissioners on the report?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Jennifer, to all your staff, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do, it's very important.
As a Papal, I know what onesies are, I like to do that.
All right. We're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the acceptance of settlement report, insolvency report in order to collect from the County Tax Administrator, and Keith Miller will lead us on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, the packet you have, I believe, has about six documents within it, so I'm gonna just quickly go through each one of those. And if you wanna stop me somewhere, then I'd be happy to stop and we'll discuss whatever you'd like to discuss there. But first, for those of you that maybe have not been here and saw this process before or saw the settlement or understand what the settlement is, just let me give you a quick little snippet on that. It's that this time last year, this board gave the tax collector order to collect for the 2016 tax year. Now, we come back as part of the statute and report to you the settlement on that charge to say, this was the levy that you charged us to collect, this is what we collected, and this is the percent of that. So, that's what the settlement is and that's what this document will give you. The first document I give you is just what we call the snapshot, the tax year 2016 snapshot. Give you the regular levy that you charged to collect, the amount that was collected, uncollected, and the percent collected. And I will say that we are very proud of the staff there, 99.88%. Again, one of the highest collection rates that Buncombe County has ever had. We continue to be very successful there and improve that every year. So, they deserve lots of credit for their hard work. On that also, we report to you the vehicles and a reminder there that the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles collect this tax for us. So, the 99.48% is not something that we are directly in control of, that is up to the Department of Motor Vehicles, okay? That gives you ending up in a total levy percentage of 99.85% for 2016. The next document, the Buncombe County North Carolina Office of Tax Collector, this is your settlement, tax year 2016 property tax. Again, it states for you the net levy, collected, uncollected, percent collected. And this document also contains the information on all the municipalities in which we collect for. So, if you flip through it, you will see the City of Asheville, Asheville City Schools, Black Mountain, Woodfin, Montree, and will give you the percent collected for each one of those municipalities. The next document is the Fire Protection and Ambulance Rescue Service Districts, 2016. This will give you each district as it is taxed and the percent collected within each one of those districts. The next one is the North Carolina Vehicle Tax System Report. This gives you a report of the fiscal year ending June 13th, June 30, 2017, which translates to the other report of the 98.48% collected from the Department of Motor Vehicles. The next report for you is the Insolvent List of Tax Bills. This comes before you, the general statute has a provision which gives you, the governing body, the option to relieve the tax collector of the duty or the charge to collect these taxes once they become greater than five years old. So, what you see on this report is a list really of personal property. So, that's important to know. This is personal property, it is not real estate. We do have means of, other ways of collecting on real estate up to 10 years, but personal property, we ask you to review this list and release us of the charge to collect on these. You see, there's many reasons here, but there's a lot of businesses here, maybe some manufactured homes which have gotten moved out of the county, we no longer can locate, businesses that have closed, there's no longer assets. So, therefore, there's not very many collection remedies left once the assets are gone. So, we ask you to approve that insolvent list. The last document then is the Order of Collection. This is the Order of Collection to the tax collector for this year of 2017. So, that gives the authority for the tax collector to use the remedies in which they feel necessary to collect the tax on which you're charging us to do. Any questions on any of those?
The only thing I can say is, good job. Yes, 99.88, that's doing pretty good. Just a few hundred thousand or so under right now, so, good job.
Good, thank you.
A great job. Mr. Miller, do we need to vote on these as a group?
Yes, that's the recommendation, that you vote on them as the packet is presented to you. So, one vote, I think, will be sufficient.
I move that we approve the package that's presented.
Second.
Motion and a second for their discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is in consideration of an ordinance to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages before noon on Sundays at licensed premises, and Mike Frue will explain the ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a proposal, an ordinance passed by the General Assembly Session Law 2017-87, signed into law by the Governor at the end of June. It simply says as follows, it amends the Chapter 153A, particular to counties, that says, "In accordance with statutes related to alcohol sales, a county may adopt an ordinance allowing for the sale of malt beverages, unfortified wine, fortified wine, mixed beverages beginning 10:00 a.m. on Sunday pursuant to license premises permit." So, it could be at 10:00 a.m. by a county or jurisdiction or a city if a local ordinance is passed allowing as such. It doesn't change what can be sold or how can be sold, simply moves the time, if allowed, from noon to 10:00 a.m. on Sundays.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
On this, in the county, we don't have liquor by the drink. So, what we're looking at is just basically the beer and the wine in the grocery stores.
Grocery stores, convenience stores, yes, sir.
That's the only thing that we're looking at. The city, you're looking at probably the mixed drinks in town and stuff, right?
That's correct, that's my understanding.
Municipalities.
Be mixed drinks, it wouldn't involve ABC stores. Just restaurants for mixed drinks, yes.
ABC store wouldn't open during that period?
I saw no change related to those. And they're not open on Sunday anyway?
Not open anyway, okay. Yeah, the main thing is, you know, it's just, if you look at Ingalls and downtown, here, in the city, the Ingalls can sell wine and stuff at 10:00, but if we don't do it in the county, they can't.
In the county jurisdiction, that would be correct.
That was my questions, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We are gonna, we're gonna take public comment. Any questions now that folks have?
No.
All right. All right, let's open it up for public comment. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Biff Gottfried. I own the farm and it's an event center.
Hi, my name is Biff Gottfried. I own the farm and it's an event center in Candler. We do mostly weddings. We do about eighty weddings a year. That's from April through the end of December. We also do other events as well, cooking classes, some of those really fun things that people love to do. I, I have a license to serve alcohol. I don't drink. I never have. I didn't know anybody that even drank until I was out of college. So, I, I feel the responsibility of doing the right thing. I have weddings and the millennials are very much experienced. Experiences of weddings is so many people, that has to do with drinking alcohol. And I know that I don't, I can't sell mixed drinks in my, but the people can come and get their licenses and they bring that themselves. So, for me, on a Sunday brunch, if they would have a license to bring it, that's different than selling it at a grocery store. And we're being very, we're very serious about how we deliver and serve the alcohol. We only let a bartender serve that. I, money is not, not the number one issue for us. It's being able to say yes to our guests coming in for a destination wedding. If they, if they ask that question, can they have alcohol on, at a Sunday brunch? And I have to say, no, not, you can't, then they will go somewhere else. And that's a lot of money that we are losing for Buncombe County because that means that the bakers won't, they'll go somewhere else to have their wedding. Or they'll come down into town in Asheville to have their, their brunch. So, Buncombe, we're losing money for Buncombe County. I would really like to see this get passed so that we save our little slice of North Carolina and keep it safe. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Yeltsin?
Believe it or not, I feel sorry for you all, so I'm gonna be a little lighthearted. I was born and raised here. It does have its advantages. I remember when moonshine was three dollars a gallon. Everybody made a little bit. Then the federal government says, man, look at all the money you're losing. My granddad used to haul a fifty-five gallon drum of liquor from up in Yancey County to Lexington Avenue, got five dollars for the barrel, and they sold it for a nickel a shot. You figure how much money the bar made, okay? And the state and the federal government said, look how much money you're losing on taxes by not selling alcohol. So, they passed prohibition, made it illegal. Anytime you make anything illegal, guess what happens? Price of it goes up. So, y'all have heard all kinds of things tonight. I got a suggestion for you. Hey, serve liquor twenty-four hours a day. Hey, make marijuana legal, tax it. Put a sheriff's car in front and outside of every bar and every brewery in Buncombe County. Increase the fines and balance your budget and lower the taxes on us taxpayers. I'm dead serious about it because you make it illegal, price of it goes up. Opioids, you have to get it through a prescription, then somebody gets it and they get an extra bottle. And thank you, Brandon, for mentioning that because they'll go out and they'll sell that, right? If they don't take it, they'll find somebody to give them something for it. So, the best way to find out how much opioids is moving through here is contact to see how much these drugstore buys. And I think you can do that because we passed federal law and you can't find out what I take. That's my private information. So, sometimes all these laws screw us up. So, just pass that, let everything happen, let everybody do what they want to do. But when they are not responsible, put their butt in jail and make them stay there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members' Board. What I said earlier, I'm gonna stick by it about this drinking. I think there's an issue that needs to be looked at. If you need to move it up to state legislature, do that. I think everybody that sells alcohol ought to have to put up a million-dollar liability, insurance, if something happens to the patriot or anyone else. And I think that ought to be took care of at the state legislature because this safety issue that I spoke about earlier, it certainly is. If we don't do what we can do, you know, I'm talking about y'all, not me. But, y'all have got an opportunity to do something, send a message that we're not gonna tolerate this kind of stuff. Business people, let me tell you, it's all about greed. If a neighbor does it, they want to do it. It's the old saying, we wanna keep up with the Joneses. There's something more to life than keeping up with the Joneses. We've talked about opioid, we've talked about the serious things that DSS deals with. We need to think logic here. These things keep happening because all of these little laws that we can prevent something from happening, we just pass it on and say, oh, we're gonna make a little profit on that. Is profit talking about real-life situations being solved? We need to think about the long-term future of what we're doing. Just because the City of Asheville does it, don't mean we do it. We need to send a strong message here, even though it might sound simple in one way. Send a message to the people that we're talking about your kids. We're talking about safety. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Come back to the commission for further discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hold on. Do you have a comment?
Yeah.
Hold, go ahead. There is a motion where we'll be looking for a second in a moment, but go ahead.
The farm, my daughter got married there. Very nice place. I love it. I mean, I just can't support this Sunday morning alcohol. I just, I don't think we're talking enough money. The people come to the farm or any of our other western North Carolina venues to have weddings and everything. Hopefully, after a Saturday night of their wedding, they're staying over on the Sunday that this is not gonna really break anybody. I think it would show some morals to maybe make the place even more presentable, you know? We served wine and alcohol at my daughter's wedding, very little was drank, you know? Because of the people we had. So, in saying that, you know, man, I, I'm not an alcohol drinker so I'm not really at liberty to voice my opinion. But, I just, you know, feel like Sunday morning is a morning that you feel the safest on the highway. And me being a racecar driver, over the years, and safety very big, is I feel Sunday morning is the safest time on our North Carolina highways that we have. And I would like to keep it that way.
Just a brief comment. I plan to vote for this ordinance, but I do just want to take a sec because we're talking a lot about addiction tonight. And when we talk about addiction, I think we also should talk about alcohol addiction and use the platform to just shine some light on that issue as well. We do live in a town where beer particularly is a big driver in our economy and I think a lot's good about that. And I also think it brings with it some responsibilities, just to make sure that we're helping people stay safe, helping people get help when they need it. And if we're gonna pass something that's increasing access to alcohol, I just think taking a moment to pause and make sure we're talking about the whole picture. And I certainly would invite more conversation in our community about how we can reduce the rate of DUIs, increase access to treatment for folks, and make sure we're promoting a real culture of safety around the kinds of issues that can come up related to alcohol use.
So, I've got, I've got a couple of comments. I don't think it's gonna shock the board on where my, where my vote falls on this at all. And it doesn't have anything to do with the, with the businesses. And the lady that spoke, it's a wonderful business and, you know, great people. So, this is no reflection on, on businesses. But, I do believe personally that, that there are erosions into times and into family time that, for me, is unacceptable. And this is one of them where I would rather there, personally, but personally, would rather there be no sales on Sunday, any, any at all. But, that's not the way it is. But, when it comes, you know, below twelve, I just personally can't support it for various reasons, but it's no reflection on the businesses or those that have their certain goals. I can tell you that I do know that when our company decided, the company I was with before, after twenty-five-plus years, decided to close their, close business on Sunday, that their business, that the next year, we had a record year because we committed to more of the other six days and stepped it up a notch. So, I do think that for some people, it may have a financial effect, but for many, it wouldn't. It's not gonna make a difference at all. But, for me, I, I just don't personally think it's no reflection on our other commissioners. I'm not saying that if someone votes for this, that they're against families or some of the things we've been talking about. But, I just believe that if I, that it's just simply not good for the families of Buncombe County. So, I will not be supporting it.
All right. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
A second. And I would like to comment before we vote. I agree with what the other commissioners have said. And I agree when we talk about families and being responsible. You know, my wife and I just celebrated our forty-seventh anniversary a few years, few days ago. My parents were married sixty-nine years. So, when it comes to family values, I believe in that. But, I also believe in being fair to the constituents and the people that we represent in Buncombe County. And I didn't run for this office to be a moral policeman. I ran to make sure that we're fair in what we do for the people. And you know, some things we cannot dictate in America or tell people what to do. I mean, we have the right to make our own decisions. I might not agree with a lot of them, but as long as we're legal in what we do, you know, that's the American way. That's why I fought in Vietnam. I mean, I believe in the principles, you know, freedom and giving people the right to choose. So, with that, I will say that I will vote for this because I think it's only fair to the people who we represent, the businesses, so that they'll be competing on a level playing field, you know, with the businesses in Asheville and the other counties. And I agree, you know, when you talk about families and being safe on the highway, that's true. I do that. And I think that's up to us as individuals to do it. And as someone mentioned, if we break the laws, punish them. But, I think we have a right to the people we represent to be fair with this. And therefore, I will vote for it.
One more, Chairman. I've been going backwards and forwards over here. I hear good, I hear bad, and I try to figure it out. What I said originally was, yeah, people, people are gonna buy in the morning. They'll buy at ten o'clock in the city, or they can buy at ten o'clock in the county. And, and, and Al, you just said it right. We'd be punishing a certain amount of the people. They would have to drive further to be able to do the same thing that they're gonna do, whether you say it or not. I was gonna go no, but now I'm probably gonna say yes to it. That's a hard one to say, but that's, I don't wanna punish anyone or, and I don't. And I'm, I'm like everybody else. I haven't drank in a long time. I had, I had quite a few years ago, but the main thing is, it's a good discussion and it moves you around in different ways. So, I thank you for the opportunity to look at this, all of you.
Right. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No?
No.
Did our clerk, Kathy, was that clear? Great. All right. Passes five to two.
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of order, since this is an ordinance and it's the first time it's been presented to the board, it cannot pass unless it's unanimous, so it'd come on to the next agenda before it be approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And when we bring it back, just for process, just kind of looking ahead, since we did have a hearing on it tonight and took public comment, do we need to do that again or on the second reading? We'll need to vote again, Mr. Frue.
That would just be at the pleasure of the board. It would be perfectly proper to put it on consent or old business.
Okay. All right. We'll think about that. I don't think we'll put it on consent because I think consent, consent is for consensus items. So, we'll just schedule it on the agenda and take it at the next meeting.
Any, any ordinance at the meeting at which it's first introduced, it doesn't pass at that first meeting unless it's unanimous.
Okay. All right. All right.
Automatically go to the next meeting by procedure and then we'll vote again?
Yes.
And if it doesn't pass?
It can pass then with a simple majority. Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Frue. All right. Very good. The next item on the agenda is the Budget Amendment Fund Sixty-Six Solid Waste Transfer Facility and Solid Waste Capital Project Ordinance. John Creighton will explain the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, back in October fifteen, we set a budget for a new transfer station that's out by the county garage. Set that budget at two point, or eight point two million dollars. We hired a construction manager at risk to help us guide through the process as far as cost. We did the design in-house with our own architect. End of last year, we started running some numbers. We dialed back the size of the, the transfer station, the building itself. And we looked at some cost-saving measures like the scale house. We would buy modular and physical facilities. People would basically finish off the interior. Thought there'd be some savings there. But, we had opened a round of bids, one round of bids, a couple of months ago, which basically started removing the trash at the old Hominy Creek landfill site. It was an old City of Asheville landfill. And I'm happy to say that's gone quite well. But, about three weeks ago, we opened bids of the next phase. And the problem we had was, there wasn't a lot of participa, participation. About half the bids, we had to re-advertise again simply because we didn't have three bidders to open. When we finally opened all the bids, there were two outstanding parts of the contract that really jumped out as being hot. One was, the concrete work was about a million dollars over and the site work was about a half a million dollars over. So, right now, I'm sitting at about eight point three million dollars in an eight point two million dollar budget. There's an alternative, an alternate that I'd like to take. Paving the parking lot at the, at the county garage once construction's finished. I've gotta buy scales and then I'll have to buy trailers to haul the trash because we're going to a top-load facility. Like I say, we're doing value engineering, but I think everybody's read this, everybody's busy and prices are coming in more or higher than, than was anticipated. I think this is probably the first time in my career of running projects for the county that I've had to stand up here and say that I need more money. Now, I guess the fortunate part is that this comes out of the enterprise fund and the solid, we're borrowing from ourselves from the solid waste fund. And we do have the capacity for the one point five million dollars extra that I'm asking for tonight. You got any questions that, that I can answer?
Doesn't sound like it.
All right.
So, you're asking for a budget amendment to move forward at this time?
Yes, sir.
All right. Alright. Uh, we will take public comment on this. Um, well, let me just ask first, is there a motion? I will make a motion to approve the budget amendment, is there a second?
A second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Uh, let's open it up to public comment. Mr. Yeldon?
We went to sleep on that.
Keeping everybody on their toes is what we're doing.
I just have a question, if I can. Uh, are, since you're gonna go to the top loaders, are you gonna get one of the elevators at the landfill to unload it? Or how you gonna be unloading there? I, I, I'm just curious to that, and is that included in the enterprise of the project?
We're, uh, we're not looking at, at purchasing a tipper.
How you gonna get it out?
Just walking floors.
Oh, okay, so walking floor, got you. What'd you do to your finger?
Alright, you guys can take that offline.
Yeah, 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 take it outside.
Okay, any other questions from the, uh, public? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the, um, budget amendment. And, and we need to, can we approve this in one motion? There's a budget amendment and there's an ordinance. Can that, can the motion approve them both? They are, they're both listed, so the, the motion will be to approve the ordinance and the amendment. Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Creighton.
Thank you.
Alright, we're, uh, concludes our new business. We have a couple of board appointments we need to take a look at. The, first one is the, okay, the first one is the Women's Commission and, um, so we've asked the, uh,
Oh, okay.
Well, just one update, so we've asked the Women's, we have a lot of applicants for this. We've asked the Women's Commission, um, if they would like to give us some guidance on the types of people they might wanna add. So we're waiting for feedback there, so I would suggest we don't need to take any action on this tonight.
Right, that's great. Yep.
Great. Alright, next up, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one vacancy. Uh, we have one applicant, Chantel Smart.
I nominate.
Oh, I'm for, yeah. You need a motion?
Yeah, uh, let's, uh,
Move, nominate.
I shall move.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, uh, the Civic Center, we've got two vacancies. We currently have one applicant.
I'll make a motion for Thomas Van Slambach.
Alright, uh, there's a motion and a second, further discussion?
I'd like to, um, extend this, uh, until we can have more, since there are two vacancies to fill.
We don't.
Against Thomas.
No, we don't know, we wouldn't normally do that if there was just.
We have in the past, um, held things open longer, um, when we've only had a few. We've had, we've done that quite a few times, held it open.
They could apply for the, for the one that's open. That would be my preference, that the, there's a motion and a second on the floor, so I think we have to vote on the motion and second.
Uh, we, we'll vote on the motion, uh, but, um, I think the comments, we, we've definitely done it both ways. So sometimes we want a bigger pool, sometimes we move ahead, so it's, it's, um, um, the pleasure of the board. Alright, are there further comments on the motion? Alright, all in favor of the motion to go ahead with this one appointment, um, at this time, we'll, if it does pass, we will, um, continue to look for the other vacancies. If it doesn't pass, we will, it doesn't mean we're not appointing this person, but would, we will just continue it over and, uh, further consider it, uh, along with other applicants. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, uh, HRC, we have two re-appointments, Brian,
Chairman, can I?
Yes, sir.
Did we just approve?
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We still have one other.
We still have one, yeah.
We still have one other vacancy, so if anybody is interested in serving on the Civic Center Commission, we would love to hear from you. And it's an important board, it's an important community facility, so, um,
Sure is.
So help spread the word and, uh, and, uh, we'd love to talk to you. Alright, we have the Historic Resources Commission, we have two re-appointments, uh, Brian Moffett and Amanda Warren. Is there a motion to reappoint?
I wish, I might, I make the motion.
Alright.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Uh, comments on the motion to reappoint? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Adult Home Care, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, we have four vacancies, one applicant. Uh, would someone like to make a motion for Kim Malakode or just further discussion?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the Asheville Buncombe Sports Commission, we have one vacancy, we have one applicant, Josh O'Connor.
Is that, is that a conflict? Is that a conflict to have Josh?
Well,
So, so the question was, was you a conflict?
Did you feel conflicted when you were there, uh, Josh?
I mean, I think it's good because, um, I mean, they deal a lot with, with sporting events.
Probably not.
It really gives us a better, I think it, I think it really gives us a better seat at the table in, in helping it to, to be successful, being the event. And it also, uh, allows, I guess, some of our facilities to be used where, you know, I'm, I miss, I may not really think of that way, but I think Josh would, I think he's real interested in serving, he really is.
So I'll make a motion for Josh O'Connor.
Alright, there's a motion and a second, further discussion?
I was just asking a question.
I think it's a good question. I mean, I think, I think, um, but it, but there is a really logical connection to it as well. So I think it's a good fit.
Mr. Chairman, unless he's gonna benefit financially, uh, from it, I don't, uh, think it comes under conflict.
Okay, alright. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you to everyone who's put yourself forward to serve on these boards and commissions, we appreciate your service. And that concludes the, um, agenda, the published agenda. Um, on August fifteenth at five P.M., we will have the next meeting of the Board of Commissioners here in room three tw, two-six at two hundred College Street in Asheville. Uh, we do have a closed session, uh, we're gonna cover a couple of different items. Um, Mr. Deuge, could you? Your item, your item, could you explain your item? And I think we have two others that are for other purposes.
I'm informed that we have one personnel matter, that we have one economic, uh, development matter, and I have a legal matter.
Could you repeat the, uh, the reasons for closing?
We have one personnel matter, we have one economic development matter, and we have one legal matter.
Okay, alright. Could we have a motion to go into closed session for those reasons?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, we do not plan to vote on any of these matters this evening. We will reconvene, uh, at the end of the closed session, but I anticipate we will simply adjourn the meeting at that time. Alright, thank you. We're in closed session.